Welcome to the regular town council meeting in the town of Cave Creek, Arizona. The meeting is called to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Augerton.
Here.
Councilmember Bunch.
Here.
Councilmember Alkma.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Vice Mayor Ray.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Present. The council discussion, first item on the agenda is an executive session. Council discussion of town managers' performance goals for fiscal year 2023-24 pursuant to ARS § 38-431.03A1. I move, we move, I move that we go into executive session. Is there a second? All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom. Eyes have it. Welcome to the town council meeting. We've returned from our executive session. We'll continue with the town council meeting at this time. So the first thing on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Mark Tate. We're going to ask you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. All you have to do is say aye.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was the best one we ever had, Mark. Thank you. Public announcements. We just had a really successful rodeo parade. I thought it was wonderful riding on the fire truck. It looked like we had a lot more horses than we normally have. This was my subjective judgment.
What if you, the, the crew driving the sweet streets, we could talk the same thing?
I guess that's a good, we're just talking about measurements, weren't we? Another thing that, that, another announcement we had, we had a ruling at Superior Court in our favor. We actually came out on top in a lawsuit regarding the town trail system and the use of, of motorized, non-motorized equipment bikes on those trails. And so that was, that was welcome news. We also got word, I don't know if we, not just the last meeting, but one of the, one of the bills, one of the most damaging, potentially damaging bills, SB 1117. Did you want to say something about that, Carrie?
Well, they, they, it failed in third reading, but they're going to reconsider it tomorrow.
Oh.
So it's not so good.
We got a zombie bill here that risen from the dead. Hopefully it'll go the same direction. I've already congratulated our state senator. I hope they don't have to take that back. Counsel, other announcements?
I'll be happy to do that. You, y'all have, all these years, never seen me wear a hat in here. That is rodeo week, in case you don't know. And if you don't have your general admission tickets for Thursday night, Friday nights, Saturday night or Sunday afternoon matinee, you're missing out. It's going to be the best show in town this coming weekend. And the best part is it's on the west side, so it's not over here in the middle of town where all the motorcycles are going to be. So come on out and see the rodeo.
Next on the agenda is called to the public. And let me just read this. Our brand new welcome. Welcome to town council meeting. I'm Mayor Bob Morris. Before we begin our meeting, I'd like to clarify how it is conducted and specifically the public comment prior portion of the meeting. Public comment is welcomed. This is one of the many ways to inform your local governmental representatives and, and staff of issues that are important to you or to suggest improvements in the way we conduct the town's business. Our goal is to have a welcoming and friendly atmosphere between our community members and local government. Speakers are reminded to address their comments to the mayor and council and not to the audience. Arizona Open Meeting Law governs these activities and greatly restricts how meetings are conducted and how council members communicate outside of the public meeting. There are two opportunities for the public to speak. First, at call to the public immediately following these remarks, you will have an opportunity to speak to council staff and all those participating and watching via Zoom. There can be no discussion by council of items raised, but we can ask direct staff to investigate. Arizona requires that all discussed items be on a published and advertised agenda, so all parties have notice of potential action. Speakers must come to the podium, speak directly to council. Speaking to staff or other audience members is not permitted. Please speak clearly into the microphone. To begin, state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak on the relevant subject. You will note a set of three lights on the podium. Green means you are within your three minutes. It turns yellow as your time is about to expire and red when your time is expired. At that point, please expeditiously conclude your thoughts. The second way to publicly, publicly communicate with us is during the public comment or public hearing section on a specific agenda item. Speaking is conducted in the same way as call to the public at the microphone and limited to three minutes. If you wish to speak during either of these opportunities, please take a form on the table near the door and fill out your information. Please hand it to our town clerk, Teresa Riza, sitting to the left of council members. Period. She will call your name when it is your time to participate. Thank you for attending our council meetings and taking the time to participate and express yourselves. Democracy in action. So we're in the call to public. This is for general, it's not for the specific agenda items. If you hear on a specific agenda item, you'd want to wait until that agenda item is called to have, have your remarks here. With that, we'll open up call to the public. Teresa?
No one wishing to speak.
We have none. Okay. Town manager report.
Now that you've said everything, I could think of. We did have our, our first annual brush drop off recently. We had 72 loads. So not quite as many people, but the loads got bigger. So we don't, we won't have the actual weight of the brush dropped off for several weeks. But I want to encourage those who have more to drop off or, or didn't get their properties cleaned up in time for this event to come on Saturday, April 8th, from eight o'clock until noon down off Carefree Highway at the wastewater treatment plant to drop that off. It's a good thing and any minute now it's going to warm up. And all, all of the brush is going to dry up and it'll be fire season again. So please, if you can clean up your properties, keep defensible space and keep the community safer. Everyone would appreciate that. We never want to have a repeat of the disastrous fires that we had in this community. The other thing is, we would like to greatly improve our participation from the public at our budget meetings. And although I haven't heard from all of the council members, we are going to schedule a couple of work sessions the first and second week of April. So be on the lookout for the dates and time. And then we plan to have the third opportunity. Well, we'll have, the first meeting is actually just an opportunity for council and, and staff to have a discussion. So we make sure we had, get input from council. But then the second work session, well, we will be taking public comment. The third session should be May 1st, which is a regular town council meeting for an opportunity for the public to have input. And then we have at the, planned for the second meeting of May where the public can comment before any action for tentative budget approval. And then again, we'll have a final budget adoption where there's public input. So I'm saying that so the people in the audience can pay attention to the dates and come to the meetings and spread the word. If anyone is online listening or listens later, please look for the online. And if you wish to get notifications of all of our meetings, you can contact the town clerk and she'll be happy to add you to the email list. So please, please come and participate. It's one of our most important functions, the staff and councils to set the budget and the direction for the next fiscal year. So we encourage you to participate. That's it.
Thank you.
Carrie, I'd just like to commend you and the staff for the newly implemented wrap-up of council meetings that are now posted online under Mayor Morris's name. I think they're wonderful. It's a great way to reach more people who could read exactly what happened during these meetings and items of importance. So just this one that you just mentioned, attending these budget hearings could be mentioned in that report now that we're producing them. So there, that's really a, a great job and long overdue.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The eyes have it. Next is the general agenda items. The first one is the council discussion approval of second reading of ordinance O 2023-03, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, by amending chapter 155(c) regarding operational requirements for medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation facilities, and by adding title 157 comma recreational marijuana presented by the developmental, development services director, Mr. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Nailed the name. I like it.
I can pronounce it.
Ernie, where have you been? Okay, so this is the second reading of the ordinance, as you stated. There were no changes from the first reading. I did receive a phone call today by a gentleman in the audience that had questions about it. Really what this does is gets in line with what the state by ARS 36-22850 allowed municipalities to adopt regulations specific to the sale of recreational marijuana by state licensed marijuana establishments. This does not allow or approve the manufacturing, processing or cultivation or any of those things within the, the recreational zone. And furthermore, the zoning ordinance would prohibit that in the town core commercial zone. So I, I just wanted to go on record and state that as that was a concern that was mentioned that by allowing a recreational facility, there would be processing and manufacturing of marijuana related items to that. It's, that's not. This is strictly for retail sales, retail sale establishments expressly for marijuana. With that, I'd be happy to answer any, any questions or turn it over to Bill if, if, or Mr. Sims, if he has something to add. Thank you.
This just implements the statute. Gives you the opportunity to tax recreational marijuana. It conforms medical.
Is the microphone on?
I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize.
Thank you.
This allows you to implement the statutorily authorized ordinance without it, you, the, your persons could, could use the property because the statute isn't self-executing and you have a non-conforming use. So by adopting this, you now conform medical with, with recreational. You take advantage of, of authorized taxes and, and, and I think that was it. Sales taxes, not property.
Questions from council? So just summarize, say if I wanted to start manufacturing marijuana and from the materials that I read, it requires some kind of solvent and there are odors involved in it in producing some marijuana products. So if I wanted to do that in town, what would I have to do?
You would have to do it out of your own home. You could not do it in a, in a town core commercial zone property.
So people in their homes can manufacture marijuana products using solvents and?
According to the state of Arizona, yes, sir.
And in what quantities?
I think it's, you've got to be over 21 years old, no more than.
Six plants?
Six plants, yeah.
So it wouldn't be very cost effective to.
No, it wouldn't.
Very broad. Yeah, six plants is not.
There are probably locations in the valley that have zoning that would allow mass production and, and, you know, production of goods. I don't, I'm not a marijuana person, so I don't know what, what all that entails. But as far as the town goes, you cannot process, manufacture any of the products related to marijuana. So baking cookies, for example, that would not be permitted.
Mr. Mayor, if I could address your point, I mean, the state statute, this does authorize in effect individual use in their homes, but it isn't unconstrained. For example, and this, this is patterned after the statute. Individuals shall not possess or manufacture marijuana by means of any liquid or gas other than alcohol that has a flashpoint below 100 degrees. Residents shall not emit dust, fumes, vapors, or odors into the environment. An individual shall ensure that ventilation, air filtration, building and design standards are compatible with adjacent uses and the requirements of the adopted building code. So there are some provisions that address your concern, but it's authorized by statute.
And who, and that's, and we have those in force in our town.
Well, you will, once you pass.
Once we pass this, we will have that in force in our town.
Yes, sir. After 30 days notice.
After 30 days. Now, this is is this a public hearing? It says public comment. Was this a hearing?
Your hearing was first reading.
Okay. I guess council had no other questions, then we'll, it'll take public comment on this.
Mark Tate?
Mayor Morris, Vice Mayor Royer, my name is Mark Tate. I'm a business owner here in Cave Creek. I don't technically live in Cave Creek. All of my addresses is Cave Creek address. But for your record, my business address is 7100 Cave Creek Road, 204.
Windstone Trail, Cave Creek, Arizona. I'm here on, in my capacity as a business owner in Cave Creek. I think my questions were answered by Luke. I am, I called him earlier today. My concern as a business owner in Stagecoach Village is the production or the processing of marijuana could cause a fairly considerate nuisance that, you know, would have a pretty profound impact on the property value in Stagecoach Village. We're going through quite a change in Stagecoach Village. We're 100% full now. There are a lot of big events that I think really brand Stagecoach that are, are the town of Cave Creek that are happening in Stagecoach Village. We want to keep that sort of thing happening. So I think I put on my card that I was opposed to this. I think I understand. I'm actually in favor of it. I understand what the attorney is saying and what Lucas said, but I just wanted to get on the record as, in my capacity as a business owner to really try to be against, you know, the processing of marijuana in the town of Cave Creek.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Bucy.
Hi, my name's Ty Bucy and thanks, given me the opportunity to be here, mayor, council people. I also have a business in Cave Creek, same address, 7100 East Cave Creek Road, 132, 133, 125, 126, 127, 128, 129, 30, 31. So we're really invested in Cave Creek. My only concern and after reading and hearing what Luke had mentioned earlier, I think I'm fine with what was discussed earlier and how Mark articulated it. But my, my question might be is the word processing. You know, sometimes you see a word and you're not sure exactly what that means. What if they're baking something and the smell is coming out of the building? So I don't know if that's a, needs a legal, you know, explanation or at least, at least expand on, should those be identified or at least maybe broaden so that you're not caught with, oh geez, you know, I wish we would have decided to say no bakery baking marijuana here and thus the fumes coming out of the chimney. So that's, that's, I guess, my, my two cents on that. I have nothing against marijuana. So that's not the issue. The one thing I do have an argument with is on Carefree Highway up near 12th Street, there is a cultivating and a retail center that for about a mile, when I have my five grandchildren with me, we are smelling more marijuana than I did in my frat house back in the early 70s. So I, I don't know. I think that's in a, in a separate, it's not managed by clinics or, I think it's under Maricopa County, but I assume some, some of you go up Carefree Highway, right?
Yeah.
Do you guys know what I'm talking about? Because I've Googled it and I see nothing in the, nothing on that. But then I talked to people who live there and they're like telling me, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. So that's what I want to avoid, anything that would be like that where, you know, it just would be problematic if that smell escaped from almost a mall. So thank you.
Thank you.
Don Crowder?
Mayor, council. My name is Don Crowder. I own a building at 7100 East Cave Creek Road, Stagecoach Village. I bought the building two years ago to bring in a museum. There's also another museum going in two doors down from me. And I understand that you have to comply with the state law. And it makes sense because I was, I was against it because I didn't have enough information. But my biggest concern is I'm a 20-year Army veteran. I did a lot of counter-drug missions all over the world. I really don't want to see somebody doing a dispensary or whatever when we have two museums. We have the art league that has children's classes all the time. I think we have to be careful about whose rights are we protecting or whose rights are we defending? And, and go with a kind of a majority rule. I'm kind of concerned about, is there going to be like a, a use permit? If we end up with a dispensary, whether or not they manufacture, but just a dispensary. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm after education. We have a lot of children around. We have a lot of events that have children. I don't, I don't see the need for a dispensary. So my question is, is there going to be a use permit? If they're not manufacturing, what are your, your rules going to be for, for that? Because I understand the, the law about within so, so many feet of a school, a residence. There are several rules that go by and according to that, there couldn't be a dispensary there. So that's my question for the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers? Bill, do you have any comments?
The concerns that are being raised here have to do with, it's already on the books. Spent, this doesn't authorize dispensaries. You already have one. And the state is heavily regulating these and I doubt you'll have another. And so the point is that there, you have one dispensary in town now. It's already regulated. How long has it been in town? 10 years?
Eight to 10 years.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't, I, I'm not aware of any, of any problems that have been created. This doesn't authorize any more dispensaries. This only authorized recreational marijuana use and to have an additional dispensary, the state would have to authorize it in the county, and I think you've already got one. And so that.
Other comments from council?
I, I tend to agree. We need to limit how we allow those and I understand state law and everything, but I, I think we need to be careful about if we allow dispensaries, we ought to just identify a certain area or a certain other, you know, a certain location or certain locations and not allow it elsewhere. And I think we can do that through the auspices of the general plan. So when we meet with the planning commission, that's something for them to consider, I think.
Well, do you have a comment?
I think it already happened. It's already been done. You have one and there's not going to be anymore until the state, we're opening up the additional dispensaries and I doubt they will. And so right now you have one, it's been around, I thought, 10 years.
Yes.
And, and it's, I think it's restricted to certain districts, is it commercial districts or?
Correct.
Commercial? And, and I'm not aware of any, and I'm not aware of any complaints. But this, what you're doing tonight has nothing to do with dispensaries. This has to do with recreational marijuana facilities. And it allows you to control them that you would need to do to implement the authority under the statute. And it allows you to make sure they pay taxes and it allows you to inhibit testing, if you will. So which generates no taxes. And so what you're doing is you're, you're, you're using the, the authority under the statute to control marijuana establishments. The entity issuing these, there's, there's only a discrete number. And as I recall, I think you have one and, and I think there's a, there's a limit on the number per county.
Other questions from council? So then we are looking for a motion to approve the second reading. So we want to make that.
I'll make it. Motion to approve second reading of ordinance 02023-03, an ordinance of the mayor and the council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek town code by adding chapter 157 entitled recreational marijuana and amending chapter 155. C of medical marijuana dispensary and cultivation facilities.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The eyes have it. Seven zero. Item number two is council discussion approval of second reading of ordinance O 2023-04, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek town code, chapter 33, entitled Boards and Commissions by amending section 33.04 procedure A, establishing an effective date providing for repeal and severability presented by the developmental services director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is once again a second reading of a town code amendment, which if adopted, will have the effect of changing the start time, the published start time of planning commission public meetings from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM. This was a request by several commissioners over, unfortunately, the last couple of years, but we're getting to it now. So that's, that's all staff has.
No public comment on this item?
Questions from council?
I support this adjustment, but I prefer adjusting the funding commission package all at one time. A whole picture of the commission's function in one place unified and linked to the reason, to the revised function should be part of our zoning ordinance review.
So you, you plan?
I support it.
Oh, you support this? But you, but you support other things also? Okay. At one time. Other comments? There is, I asked for a comment already. Teresa shook her head, yes. So I guess I'm good. Okay. In that matter, that I guess we're ready for a motion to approve or disprove this.
I'll read it. Are you going to do it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, my glasses are dirty, but I can do it. A motion to approve second, second reading of ordinance 2023-04, an ordinance, the mayor and town and council, the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek town code, chapter 33, section 33.04, procedure prints A, thereby adjusting the start time of the planning commission public meeting from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. I have number three, council discussion possible approval of res, so is that right? Yeah. Council discussion possible approval of resolution number R 2023-06, a resolution, the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing an increase in the application amount for drinking water state revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Fund, WIFA, of Arizona for the new potable water supply connection with the city of Phoenix for an amount up to $13,190,000. Presented by the finance director.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just begin, I'd like to introduce Mitzi. We'll go into some explanation. But we do have with us our bond counsel, Tim Stratton, who is in the audience, and our finance, financial advisor for this, who is online, Jim Strickland. And, and who's? And Kalen Dwyer and Sean Cruz Weisner, our utility director. Couldn't do it without him. So, and then Mitzi will give an overview, but I just wanted you to know that they are here to answer any questions you may have and make sure that you're comfortable with what we are asking of council. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Morris and council. Sean is on, he and I are here tonight along with bond counsel and our financial advisors to request an increase in the WIFA application for the new potable water supply connection with the city of Phoenix. On May 16th of 2022, a council approved a WIFA loan application in an amount not to exceed $9,500,000 for the Phoenix project. Staff is now requesting an increase of $3,690,000. project. Staff is now requesting an increase of three million six hundred and ninety thousand to finance the estimated increased costs of this project. Total amount of the WIFA financing shall not exceed thirteen million one hundred and ninety thousand to construct the Phoenix Interconnect product project. This financing will be secured by the net system revenues of the Cave Creek Water Utility. Increased amount recommended to be requested from WIFA was built into the two thousand twenty-two water rate study that was completed by Will Dan Financial Services to be financed in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. The town would be asking WIFA for this increase of the three million six hundred and ninety thousand, two years earlier than originally scheduled. New calculations were completed by Will Dan in March of two thousand twenty-three this month to reflect the increased amount on the two thousand twenty-three WIFA loan and ensure that our debt service coverage is still adequate and meets the debt coverage ratios. And Jim and Kalen, if you guys have anything to add on that. Okay, have have you do? Um. But approval of the this application with with a does not bind the town to any future loan terms or amounts. This is only the first step in the WIFA processing. So once the application goes through WIFA for its review, council would still be required to review and authorize any final loan terms, including the amount borrowed. And staff is still looking at some other financial considerations, including the congression congressionally directed spending that we've applied for in the amount of two million five hundred dollars and also a proposal the upgrade project at the town's water treatment plant. So that those funds would be available to help fund the Phoenix Interconnect project. And.
Questions from council?
Yeah.
Well, I have some. To start out about eight million dollars. I think we need an explanation.
Sean?
Yeah, I can jump in on that, Mayor and council members. Yeah, we did initially thought this is two years ago when we engaged with Black and Beach, and we had them looking at modeling the site, modeling how we could actually build the interconnect site initially is what they started to do. Yeah, at that point, we thought we had about eight million dollar project, including the design fee. Since then, because of the rising costs, it has gone up considerably in just the construction of water and wastewater projects. We are now engaged with a construction manager risk. We we finished that solicitation in the over Christmas. We actually are going to be bringing forward a contract to council shortly here with a selected firm. They have been looking at the numbers and actually giving us hard or close to hard bids at this point. They've actually started work, and they're saying, yeah, the scope of work at this point is over thirteen million dollars. Some of the major increases we're seeing just in anything to do with electrical over the last two years, what I've heard in totally is in anything electrical associated with pumps, motors, electrical equipment has gone up three hundred percent in the water and wastewater market. And then just things like the coatings that usually use internal coatings on the pipes have gone up considerably. The concrete's gone up. So while you've been seeing increases in the residential market, we're seeing much larger increases of these types of facilities for water and wastewater infrastructure. So again, this this request is largely based on the feedback that we've received from MGC at this point. They're they're not in contract at this point, but they've already started to to work to make this project successful. And and first start of that is making sure that we had funding in place. We have had the hard discussions on if we don't get this funding, what do we do? So and really, it's coming down to there's not much you can reduce from the scope. So it's looking at reducing items. One item, an example, is is can we survive without an emergency generator at this site? It doesn't sound it sounds like a no-brainer that you should put one in. But in reality, that's a million dollar add to the project to actually have a standby emergency generator at this site that can power both these pumps. The site is actually designed to feed into our pressure zones four and one, which are main components of the system. And then also, we're looking to relocate the C A P booster station up to this site. So if you did that, you know, we could look at reducing the size of the generator. If you're doing that, then you're you're limiting what pumps you can run at the same time, or do we just set it up that we can bring one in as needed? Those are the hard discussions we're having right now with the project team. So, you know, we're shocked by this. It's just we seem to be in a in a market condition right now where we're not in control. One of their goals is to ask for as much money as we can from the WIFA. That gives puts us in position. If we can get the project cost down, that actually helps the town overall by getting in a situation where if there's debt forgiveness, they're they would forgive debt on the larger amount of a loan, even though if we don't take it. But sadly, I think that the project costs have increased to the point that it's just it's a very expensive project to do at this point.
Would 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 you, of course, would you go over what benefits the town is going to receive from this project?
The biggest benefit is, you know, the town's water system is really dedicated on one single pipeline coming up the C A P from the C A P canal up Cave Creek Road, just over twelve miles to the town's water treatment plant. So currently, we have no functional wells in the town's water system. We're reliant on the C A P allocation that we the town has. So that puts us in multiple points of single points of failure, and there's four booster pump stations that work in series in line to push that water up that twelve-mile pipeline. If we have any outage on any one of those sites, that means we can't send raw water up to our treatment plant site. And then we have a single point of failure at the treatment plant. There's more redundancy at the treatment plant sites than the cat boosters. Ironically, we should have a mercy generator at the 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 treatment plant site, which we don't have the 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 inline boosters. But any any component could take out the treatment plant potentially and limit our ability to put water into the system. We do have reservoir stores in the system that helps us meet the normal system demands and some emergency backup, but because of water quality issues, we just can't keep the tanks full all the time. So we have to continually drain and fill them, which means depending on when we are, you know, if an accident were to happen or an incident were to happen, we're really dependent on where we are in our cycles of managing our reservoir. So the town system is is delicate, to say the best. The staff have done a great job over the last couple of years of doing enhanced maintenance to upgrade the booster pump stations. I mean, we have spare pumps. So if one were to go out, we have a spare that we can get installed fairly quickly. So I have to get a contractor deck, because we don't have a crane large enough to move that. We have some electrical components. We're buying spare electrical components. We've upgraded things like the program logic controllers, the computers, the P L Cs that run the sites, including the ones that run the treatment plant site. So but there's still potential for a failure, which puts the town at risk for not having water put into the pipes for citizens. So the real benefit to the town for this interconnect with the city of Phoenix is is that we're eliminates that single point of failure. Phoenix agreed to give us a water supply. It's not equal to our maximum daily demand, which is we we're just under three million gallons a day that we need to provide for our customers during the peak summer months. But that drops down to close to about a million, one point one million right now during the winter time. The the connection with Phoenix, they they've agreed to allow us to get up to one point four million gallons a day out of the system. And if in case of emergencies, they can give us a little bit more. That's really predicated on their system downstream. I've actually had that question with their staff saying, could we increase that amount? And they said, you know, not a long term, because they have to meet their fire flows, et cetera. And they're they're building infrastructure downstream and improving the infrastructure downstream to provide us with this water. But by having this site in place, it gives the utility staff the opportunity that if something were to happen, you know, we do everything we can to mitigate and maintain the system. But, you know, we can't. There's still things that could happen. If a site were to go out, it gives us time to repair it by using the city of Phoenix interconnect. So it adds that level of reliability or redundancy the town has never had in its water system. Even when it had some operational wells, they were never enough. There was never enough well capacity to actually meet the the town's demand. I mean, that's why in nineteen ninety, the old private water company went ahead and put this infrastructure in place to get access to the C A P canal and the raw water treatment. So so it's really coming down to increasing the reliability redundancy of the town's water system.
Another question is, we just increased water rates. Does that water rate increase cover this?
It does. With one discretion, we actually had to push out the project that we had identified to upgrade the town's water treatment plant in the C I P that we presented later tonight, that the by mistake, we actually need to push that out to the end of the five-year cycle. But we had accounted for this within that. But we can't do both projects back to back in the C I P right now. So the rates would support, and that's why we've gone up to the maximum that is supported within the rates to allow us to get the funding for this project.
Final question from from my standpoint is for the bond council. What is the what is the net system revenue definition? The word net sounds like it limits our how much of our revenue is on the hook for this?
Good evening, Mr. Mr. Mayor, members of council. So net revenues would be the revenues remaining after you've paid the expenses for running this.
Oh, it is.
So it's the net revenues of the system. Yeah, that's what the pledge is.
Roughly speaking. Okay.
And that's consistent with the other WIFA loans that you all have as well.
That's amazingly lenient. It's not gross system revenue.
That's right.
Net net system revenue.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any last questions from council?
I have one.
I I do.
Don?
Yes, Sean, will this be done along with a coordinated education to citizens in the town and understanding, for example, why our water usage changes so much? And what citizens can do to monitor their own usage of water to become more efficient? That's I know that's not this project, but hopefully that will be done in conjunction. Thank you.
As mayor council member, yeah, that's something that we're very keen on. We presented on the town's drought management plan several months ago, and one of the goals in that that plan is to, you know, help educate customers on how they can reduce their water consumption, is if everybody was to reduce a little bit, then that helps a lot overall in the system. And that is part water conservation, water consumption is a big component of managing a water utility, especially in these days with the uncertainties going on with the Colorado River moving forward. And it's in the town's interest, although we don't have a large system. It's an important system to the town, and that's how we operate it. And if we could have everybody helping do that, and we we are looking for ways to bring in outside resources to help supplement staff. Right now, we have a lot of, you know, we have really good staff in our building department who will answer questions. We have really good field staff who go out and help. We we pride ourselves on our customer service that's done to customers to help them understand their water bills and how they can conserve. But I think we could do more, and that's one of the goals that we have as a group.
Thank you, Sean.
Quite sure who could answer this, but could you tell me what the current interest rate is for WIFA loans? Jim?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. WIFA uses the municipal market data information that's published every day. And on the Wednesday prior to closing, they will establish what the final interest rate is. We don't know yet a couple of things on this WIFA loan. So WIFA will subsidize the rate. Your twenty-two thousand eight and and two thousand eleven WIFA loans, for example, had thirty and twenty-five percent subsidies. In running these numbers for coverage purposes, we asked Will Dan to use fifteen percent as the discount, so an eighty-five percent of the current market rate. So when we ran the numbers, we used three-ten. In in looking at what that rate would be if we set it today, eighty-five percent of the thirty-year M M D rate would be two ninety-one. But for purposes of estimating the coverage, we use the three-ten. Does and and we also, one other thing that we've that we're not yet made aware of is that we will be receiving some amount of forgivable debt from the loan. And so if we ask for the the full amount, the the thirteen million, they may give us some amount that that we don't have to pay back. So our first five hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, whatever that number becomes, they they give it to us, and we don't have to pay it back. And then to to echo one of Sean's comments, it's it's worth pointing out that what we get approved by WIFA and what you actually draw down from the loan, maybe two different things. We're looking to get authorization for the maximum amount you can afford within your coverage. But we're not looking to spend any more than what you need. And so depending upon how the Black and Beach analysis goes with trying to remove some of the project costs and and reduce down the scope of the transaction, we may be able to borrow somewhat less than than the full amount. And so we're we're seeking authorization. But because it's a drawdown loan, we may not draw all the money over the three-year construction period.
I see. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Other questions from council? There is public comment on this.
David Phelps.
Good evening, council members. David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. It's my understanding that some of the loan covenants for, or excuse me, the grant covenants for monies coming towards this project could contain kind of poisonous realities for us wherein the contract or the commitment from us would need to be that we would buy only American-made parts for the entire project. And that could be more constraining on the project itself and could make a project that last time I was estimated that we had a fifteen million dollar project. Now I'm here to tell you, we got a twenty million dollar project. And it's not to berate anybody. It's just to say that's how fast things are changing. And so before I would accept the free money from Mr. Kelly, I would look at that and read all of it and understand what you're getting yourselves into. This is changing so fast. It's going up so much. I'd call a timeout on this. I really would, and I'm for it. But I would just say this is too much, too fast, too soon. Three hundred percent growth rates. Why do you want to buy into that? You don't. There's got to be a better way to get what what water we can get. And I believe you're looking at about a hundred gallons a minute from the city of Phoenix. It's not an outrageous number to receive. So that I would be looking at saying no. I mean, I'd take the line of credit, but I would be saying no on starting to build in this environment. I think we've got to step back from this and try to figure out a better way of getting the project into more manageable pieces and parts that we can chew on. So while it's not physically coming out of our pockets tonight, it's a lot of money. And we're we're really trying to compete in a very aggressive market because of the flood of infrastructure money. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers?
No additions. Okay, so we're looking, we're at the comments from council.
I I have a question for Sean, may I?
Yes.
Sean, what would be the consequences of stopping this project and waiting? You know, not not approving it tonight and waiting to a point where we would pick it up in the future?
Mayor Council, so Black and Beach, we've engaged to do the design there at what we refer to as a ninety percent. So we're looking at some final tweaks, and it's getting ready to be submitted to ready to go to to get permitting. We're paused right now as M G C is contractor we selected is looking at pricing and options. So at this point, we would, we spent about a million dollars with Black and Beach on the design. If we were to stop that and pause that for anything more than a year, there'd have to be some rework and looking at codes and standards, make sure. If we were to stop that and pause that for anything more than a year, there'd have to be some rework and looking at codes and standards, make sure it governs. So probably a couple hundred thousand dollars of rework. And then obviously, we reimburse MGC for the work that they've done at this point, but they have not purchased anything. We're trying to get them under contract to do what we call pre-construction phase, design phase services to do value engineering. And the final detailed cost estimates, we just have a little bit of sunk cost in that. We have already purchased the site. We've already done a couple of studies on how to bring this water into the system. So, you know, to 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 put a pause on the project right now, it probably costs us a couple hundred thousand dollars just to wrap it up. And then we would have to pick it up again when council sees fit to do that. And the costs associated, there'd be some additional costs, but not significant. And, you know, if we want to wait for the market, you know, you could try and time it. I think this project is very, very important, you know, since my four-year tenure with the town, we've had a couple of outages on the cap canal and the treatment plant site. And it's a very stressful situation for the staff. We've got a good staff to try and deal with this. But it has proven to me the vulnerability of the town's water system, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I, could I continue? There's additional ramifications. This project is tied to an intergovernmental agreement with Phoenix that expires. There are contractual obligations. You, once it expires, it it's gone and you would have to renegotiate any intergovernmental agreement with the city of Phoenix. Should they choose to to reconsider the project at a later date? Part of the agreement is once they have their connection south of Carefree Highway, that that is that was, was and is their water service area. That was the bone of contention with the city of Phoenix. And part of the IGA was to avoid a lawsuit with the city of Phoenix because the town was serving water with two customers in their water service area, Walmart and and others. And so once they complete their end of the project, all of the customers south of Carefree Highway become City of Phoenix water customers. We continue to serve the sewer in that area. We are currently providing the fire flow for the for the requirements for fire suppression in those buildings, and they would have the ability then to serve them. So there are just some other pieces of the IGA that we have to be aware of, so.
Thank you. Councilmember bunch. I have a comment if no one else does. This, this first arose from the Water Advisory Committee eight, ten years ago when I was on it. And because there are so many single points of failure on that cap line. Now that cap line has four sets of pumps as it pumps uphill. That sixteen miles, as I recall, sixteen inches and thirteen miles. It's quite a ways. And so any equipment failure on that, so if a road, if if a car goes off the street and hits one of those motor control centers. Or if the power company cannot supply it, and there are different power systems, there are different transformers, there are controls. There are pumps, there's just a lot of ways that that system can fail. And that is in reliability engineering, you look for single points of failure, and there are many, many, many. Having said that, it's been very reliable. It, the cap line and the water treatment plant have been quite reliable historically. So that's a factor in this. Another factor on the financing is the loans on the utility systems. I don't have the exact loans in front of me, but they start to be paid off beginning in twenty twenty-seven, and that goes completes about twenty thirty-one, as I recall, so I can correct that if it's not right. But our ability, we started out with oh sixty million dollars worth of debt, some sixty-three million, as I recall. We're probably down to about twenty now. So we have really put a dent in the in the the debt that the that the town has. And the end is in sight for that initial purchase and the sewer systems and all that. The the final thing I'd like to, well, more thing, we're in the position where we can't store water for emergencies. You really, because of the EPA rules on THM, you cannot fill your tank up and just leave it there. So now you have twenty-four or forty-eight hours of supply to make a repair on the line. Sean mentioned that we're bringing the tanks up and down, trying to keep the water from aging. So the EPA is throwing a screwball at us in addition to the basic reliabilities of that water system. So the the final thing I want to say is imagine what happens if the town is out of water. It's it's, we have, all the businesses are down, the restaurants are down, homes don't have it, horses don't have water, no showers. I guess I'll be drinking out of my pool if anybody's drank, come on over. So the consequences are are extreme for any kind of extended water outage, in my view. And Sean may have something to say about that, but I I think this project is is a tough thing to to deal with. We've already increased the rates to handle it. And I think the time has come to put this in there and and take the next step in the in the town water system. With that, any comments, questions? We're looking for a motion there.
Got it here. Motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty-three dash zero six, resolution, mayor and town council, the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, offer raise an increase in the application for a drinking water state revolving fund loan from WIFI for the new potable water supply connection with the city of Phoenix for an amount up to thirteen million one hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Second.
The other thing that you that you didn't mention was that we did have a failure in the sixteen inch line. And fortunately, at that point in time, we were able to jump on that and get it repaired before there were a lot of issues in town. You get a, you know, you got ground subsidence all over Maricopa County. You you lose one of those lines and get three feet offline or or whatever in in the alignment of the pipe when it breaks. And we're really in trouble. This this is a backup to make sure that we've got water for everybody. If if something bad happens and something bad inevitably does happen at some point in time, so. Smart move.
I think it's an important project. I realize that there could be some negative aspects to financing it, whether it's on the federal side or even the local side. But it's too important to the town. It's too important to our main sales tax revenue generator, which is Walmart. We we need to make sure that our supplies are reliable. That is first and foremost.
Some sometimes I get second thoughts. I was around in family business in nineteen eighty when our rates were incredible. Inflation was incredible and almost put us under. I don't think anything is going to get cheaper. And if we can, if if this is the maximum that we can apply for, and hopefully not use it all before inflation brings it to that level. I think it's a smart thing to do as well.
Thank you, Randy.
With that, we'll, we will take a vote.
Councilmember Elkhama?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Allerton? Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. The next item on the agenda is presentation of the draft fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty twenty-eight. Five-year capital improvement program, CIP, as you'll hear over and over again, and discussion with sound with town council presenting finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. Mitzi is going to do a presentation, kind of a quick overview. But basically, we are here to present a proposed draft capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty-four through twenty-eight. We've made adjustments from the twenty-three through twenty-seven. CIP, some of the projects are moved around and we've added some new projects. So Mitzi will go through an overview of it, and then we're going to go back and focus on the summary by fund that lists all the projects. We have some corrections as as I mentioned earlier, but Sean brought up in his, one of his projects, so we'll go over that. And then I think we can answer any questions the council may have, and the directors are here to go into any detail or answer questions about a specific project.
Tonight, I will be presenting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight Capital Improvement Plan with Carrie and the department directors. The fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight Capital Improvement Plan was put together by town staff to identify the projects that are important to the town over the next five years. Funding of these projects is important and vital. The funding priority is for reinvestment in our current capital assets for the replacement, maintenance or increased efficiency of existing systems over the expansion of existing systems or the provision of new facilities and services. Department staff have ranked these projects with a priority ranging from one to five. The rating system is assigned by staff and is not necessarily reflective of overall priorities and sequencing of projects approved by council. The rating is provided to allow a quick reference categorizing the general need for the project. The priority rankings are from one to five, with one being an urgent need and five being a project for future consideration and planning purposes. Um, the next slide shows a summary of capital project expenditures by department. Department one, you'll see is referenced on there several times. Those represent the general fund and reflect those departments that are in that are part of the general government governmental departments. The expenditure shown here include for these general government departments include projects funded with both the general fund and special revenue funds. Fund monies, general fund monies and special revenue fund monies. Departments shown on this slide for fifty, forty, fifty and fifty-five are for our enterprise funds. The expenditure shown for these funds are paid for by the revenue sources from these utilities and or any grant monies that are applied for by the utilities. And we will get into the individual project details on the upcoming slides. The next slide shows a summary of sources by type for our capital projects. The biggest source of funds is coming from the WIFI loan funds, the general fund and a possible congressionally directed spending grant for the Cave Creek Water Fund. Before we move into the project details, Carrie is going to discuss a few items on the projects by funding source schedule. And you can find the schedule in your council packet on pages thirty-four through thirty-six. That's what she's going to be speaking to.
If you turn to page thirty-four, the projects by funding, the first first column on that page is primarily funded through the general fund, and then there's some special revenue funds that you will find on page thirty-five. I just want to cover some, just make some general comments. If you look on page thirty-six, the grand total of fiscal year twenty-four is twenty-four million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, give or take. And compared to what our normal, whatever a normal CIP would look like, for example, in fiscal year twenty-three, our current CIP, the grand total was two million, a little over two and a half million, two million six hundred. So the jump is primarily the, that includes the, where is it here? Losing my place. The fire emergency services about one point eight million were not completed this fiscal year. And so they have been carried over into the new fiscal year, year of twenty-four. And the costs have gone gone up. So you see two point seven eight million dollars there. The, in for the general fund and there is, there is a Surrey Drive pedestrian crossing project under trails. On page thirty-four, towards the bottom under trails, one hundred and five thousand dollars. There is a typo essentially in that, that that will not come out of the general fund. That is actually a grant, so that needs to be moved to grants other, which you find on the other page. So that will be moved. So that that is the difference in the general fund. If you go to page thirty-five, you see the utility is thirteen million, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's, that's the huge increase that is in the grand total, including the grand total over twenty-four million. So if you take that out, if you take the fire out and add that up, you get more to what would look like more normal dollar amount. So that's, I just want to point out why the number is so high of the total because of the WIFI funding for that project and carrying over some projects from this current fiscal year into next fiscal year. Okay, so we didn't spend the money this year, but we have to rebudget for it next year. And and you'll see that in a, as a very large number, so it's, I just wanted to point that out. Those, those are the main things. Did I miss anything, Mitzi? And then the other thing I want to to point out on page thirty-six, that is an error. And Sean mentioned that under the Cave Creek Water Fund in year fiscal year twenty-eight, it shows nothing for the WTP treatment upgrade. And that's under Fund Fifty Cave Creek Water, and that's missing the, the what was about three point five million is going to be closer to six point five million by the time you get out to fiscal year twenty-eight. So that would be added in, and that was missed. That was under a, for this current fiscal year, that was budgeted, but it was or this current CIP, it was budgeted under WIFI, but didn't get moved into this summary. When we, we were putting it back into the Cave Creek Water Fund, not under WIFI funding. I think those are the only.
And the streets.
The streets. What we do need to discuss this evening, I don't want to confuse everybody, but the way that the the Public Works Streets are budgeted in this CIP, it goes out five years and it includes all of our current CIP projects that are in the current pavement management program. So everything for the current plan is in there. The problem is the plan should be updated in fiscal year twenty-six. And you would have to, then you would start in fiscal year twenty-seven on the new plan. Those two years are not in here. So when it comes time for for budgeting, funding and all of that, if you want to, if you want to look at catching up on the CIP projects for the roads, that's not built into the first two or three years. It's stretched out over five years, and those last two years do not include the new projects that should be in the updated pavement management program. Does that make sense? Supposed to be done every five years. It was done in twenty, we implement in twenty-one, it goes five years. So by twenty, and some of those projects got carried over into fiscal year twenty-six, but we're supposed to update the pavement management program by twenty-six, and we would normally start in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But it's not, it's not shown this way because of the cost. But we can talk about that and when we get into this and into the budget. Okay. Would you like to cover some more of the overview? I know that you had some concerns about the rankings and the descriptions of the ranking. Do you want to do that now as an overview before we get into projects?
Well, we're trying to be as transparent as possible and help people understand it's a complicated business. There's no getting around it. And I, I think your, your categories of urgent, very important, important, not important in future consideration don't have enough descriptive weight to give somebody who's not involved in any kind of field for what is important and what isn't. My proposal, urgent set is fine. That would be something that's safety or is legal. I would make the second one, maintain capability. That is, we have to, we have to replace pumps. We have to do work to keep the system functioning at the capabilities. The third one I'd put in is economic inefficiency. And these are kind of in order of priority, by the way, too. So economic efficiency would be, hey, there's an opportunity here to save money. And maybe that, that, an example of that would be the meter replacements. That we're, we're putting water into someone's home and they're not paying because it's under measuring the amount of water that they're actually receiving, which is also maybe a water conservation issue. And the fourth one is instead of not important, I'd call it maybe enhancements. So that it has a, a qualitative aspect to these descriptions and people might be able to understand it. And that would be things like community enhancements or we're increasing capability somewhere in, in something. So I, I would just suggest that we make this user friendly for the, for the public.
Where did you come up with this language? Did you develop it yourself or is it best practices?
Is microphone on?
Shall I repeat that?
Yes, please. Thank you, Catherine.
I, my question is, how did you develop this language? The one through five, the descriptors. Is it from other sources? Is it best practices or?
No, no, we had the, we, we just created that language in a few years. So it was self-determined.
Okay. I don't have an issue with your corrections. I was just thinking that if it was something that all municipalities use as, you know, ways to determine priorities, then maybe we should just keep it. But if not, I'm fine. The fleet management, so we covered the, the Public Works Street. So they have a pavement management program. And so then it's, there are criteria in the pavement management program that determine the life cycle of a street or road based on the kind of pavement and how it could go into that. And then how long it lasts and what you have to do in the meantime before you do a complete fill and pave if, if it's that. And then in our fleet management, we have a fleet management program, replacement program. And they're evaluated on, you know, the age, the mileage, the cost for maintenance and the life cycle of different kinds of vehicles. So some of the bigger vehicles last longer. They're very expensive, but they last longer than, than say a pickup truck, depending on the mileage and the, the wear and tear on the vehicle. So there are some criteria, but you know, utilities is similar. And they have criteria too. So I guess we could better identify that in the, the title of that. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, that's easy enough to do. So I'd like to go through in order, if we can, of, of the categories so that we address what is in the general fund, what we're using general fund monies for, and any projects that have special use funds, grants, bonding, HERF. If we could cover those first so that when we get to the, to the bottom of it, we'll know exactly what is funded from the general fund. And then as you go in further, that covers most of the, the combined general fund and special revenue funds that are on page thirty-five. And then we could, could have kind of Sean and with the water, Cave Creek Water, Desert Hills and wastewater funds. Since they're enterprise funds and have their own revenues with some exceptions like the WIFFA bonding. I don't know if you want the departments to present or if you have any questions. Maybe just go down the list, fire and emergency services. The fire station and personal protective equipment, they were in the, the fire station upgrade. We don't know the exact cost and Jim could give you the details on, on our, with that project, if you would like to go into that kind of detail. The costs have gone up. He put the estimated total cost for fiscal year twenty-four. And if the costs are that or higher and we, we look at our total funding for fiscal year twenty-four when we're doing the budget, there may be a way to break that out over two years depending on the, the cost. We don't have the final cost numbers yet. And we may be able to split that out between the fire station itself versus the bays, bays where the trucks would be. They would have something temporarily, temporary and complete the bays maybe in year two. But in terms of cost, the majority of the cost is fire station upgrade. And then, okay, any questions on that?
Well, the Caterpillar Road Grader, that's
Yeah, we're, we're going to go into
Priority five. This seems to me that that's an economic project that if, if we spend five hundred thousand dollars or five fifty for a, a road grader, that there would be a savings in contract costs or something. And we'd have a payout for something like that. So to me, that is, it's, is that a financial project? Let's see.
That is, that would need Hal's explanation. So we'll have Hal come to the microphone and explain what the road grader is in fiscal year twenty-six.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You've probably seen our road grader. I think it's right now. It's older than probably some of your grandkids.
Oh, we have one?
Yes, we have one. We have one. We are, we are babying it along. It's about thirty years old, twenty-five to thirty years old. It does a, yes, sir.
If you go down to Morning Star, you can see the handiwork of the road grader. They did a great job.
Did he do a good job?
Yes, so we have
That answers all my questions.
Yes, it, it is not a new and modern piece of equipment, but it does the job. But at the same time, it's reaching, it's reaching an age of retirement. I don't know what it, what a road grader is like dog years or whatever, but a thirty-year-old piece of equipment is getting to the end of where we can continue to maintain it.
I withdraw my question.
Okay, thank you.
It's only been stolen once.
Did you bring it back, Ernie?
Yeah, we got it back.
Okay.
Okay, any questions about any of the other street equipment? Since we're on that section. Fleet Management, again, there's a fleet management program. And we have included in, in this, the first, the first two items, a Freightliner water truck, the international three-ton roll-off for years, two and, and one for our public works. And then if you skip down to F three fifty with service body and lift gate through the end of that list, water truck. All of those are public works. The two, a fire tender truck and is that it? Oh, just the tender truck. We pushed that out to fiscal year twenty-five because the fire station, we were not able to complete this fiscal year. So we pushed that out. Now, both the fire station upgrades and the fire tender truck are required eventually. I mean, we don't have to buy them all at one time. We have the engine on order. But we need to bring our fire system up to the standards of our now membership in the regional aid system. And so that is why it's in there, but we have pushed it out a year for funding purposes. Any other questions on fleet? If you drop down past Public Works to Rodeo Grounds, we currently lease the rodeo grounds. It is owned by, if I get this right, BLM and leased to Maricopa County and sublease the rodeo grounds. We have an opportunity to acquire the rodeo grounds as the town of Cave Creek would be the owner of those. And we have criteria to meet in order to apply to, for ownership and have that transferred to the town of Cave Creek. And that includes installing the restrooms. So we've had this discussion and looked into installing the restrooms for several years. And so we finally got it. Although we have three hundred and fifty thousand in fiscal year twenty-four, we have it in this current fiscal year budget. And Luke is working hard and fast to try to get as much of that project done. We put the three fifty in there just in case, but we're hoping we don't need all of it. The, the design went out for proposals. We received the proposal. They have been contracted and they're working on it. They turned that around. We can get the proposal out for construction this fiscal year and hopefully get as much done before the end of the fiscal year as possible. So that, that three fifty will be hopefully reduced. Be nice if we could eliminate it. So any questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Who do we lease the property from?
From Maricopa?
Maricopa County.
Maricopa County?
Yeah, Maricopa County through a sublease agreement to leases it from BLM.
So we're proposing to invest seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars into property that we don't own.
In order to meet the, the mandates of the agreement that we have, we do have to show that we have restrooms, restroom facilities on the property in order to consummate the transfer of ownership from BLM to the town of Cave Creek.
Do we know what the purchase price will be?
Not off the top of my head. I don't think it will be anything
Extraordinary.
Extraordinary. BLM in, in previous discussions has, has essentially said build the bathrooms and that's, that's what we want to see.
Ten dollar consideration type thing.
So have we done an analysis on if it's a wise purchase? I mean, I may, you know more than I do. But I, you know, I, I think other people are probably asking that same question.
I think the question is that if we put the restrooms in the rodeo grounds, can we use it for other purposes?
Yes.
And we own it.
That, that is the
That's the objective.
Sure, yes.
Because it, it seems like if you're just using it for rodeo once a year, it doesn't seem like a good investment. But if we're going to use it for other stuff, that may make more sense.
And what's the, and what's the timeframe? When do we have this job done?
There's no, there's no timeframe to put the restrooms in. Once again, it's, once you do the restrooms, the, the property is in essence yours. So it's getting that. This is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar price tag that for a very long time has been just pushed forward year over year over year. And we're to a point within the last six months where we had an opportunity to go out to bid to have a septic system designed because the septic is a large component of that. And now we've just recently published the RFP for a construction firm to build it based off of a design that we've already had drawn for sitting on four years now. So this is really the opportunity we have. And, and to Councilman Rose's point, the, not only the town putting this investment of the restrooms in allows us to acquire it, but it also gives organizations like the Cape Creek Rodeo Days Group the ability to forecast and plan for enhancements to the VIP area and other things that don't just benefit the three or four day rodeo that would benefit the community, the greater community to have other events out there as well. So it makes the, it makes the rodeo grounds more marketable.
I think the point is if we're going to invest three hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or a little bit more than that, three quarters of a million dollars, what's the bang for the buck? Are there other things we can do with it so we can try to recoup some of the revenue? You know, like lease it out to fairs or flea markets or whatever. Speaking off the top of my head, just something. Can we get other events there or other things there?
Well, and yes, I agree. But who then will be responsible for recruiting people to rent that space? Is that another thing that will fall under your group?
Well, the best recruitment is generally word of mouth. And once people find out that they can have a great, a greatly located, a greatly situated facility that's close to the metro Phoenix area that has restrooms that they don't have to bring in Portageons and rent additional facilities to have an event out there. It makes it extremely marketable and, and really that in and of itself recruits additional events out there.
Okay, and then lastly, what does the neighborhood think? Do we, have we ever asked?
The neighborhood
Surrounding the fairgrounds, you know, there's, it's quite a residential area.
So it's, it's unincorporated county just to the west. It's on our westernmost border. They're along Matic is, is Cave Creek property. And they all, they've, they've all asked if they can have the old chutes that we've taken out of the arena and replaced. Thanks in large part to the Cape Creek Rodeo Days organization for redoing the whole rough stock north end of the arena. They're in support of it, of, of the use of the rodeo grounds by and large.
Well, because they, they would have to be if, if we're anticipating being able to rent it out more frequently. They're going to have more traffic in their neighborhoods.
Could we get a survey? You know, survey the neighborhood, just send, send a mailer out or something, ask them what they think. Or having a meet, have a meeting or something out there. I mean, it's just good public relations.
It's been there fifty years.
But it's only been used once a year.
That's, that's not true.
They lease, they lease it for ropings. Yeah, prior to COVID, I believe we were eighteen to twenty-five events a year out there.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, really COVID kind of put a a pause on a lot of things.
Okay.
I just think it's worthwhile to, to survey the public.
Sure.
I, I had many, many conversations with the Baxley along the same lines. Is, I, I view this as a public park. It is a public event center like many, many, like Gilbert has a tremendous one out there. There was a great deal of demand for ropings, barrel racings, Jim Connas, other rodeos. We had a big bruhaha last year because another rodeo came in. So I, I, I think it's wise though that we set objectives on usage, the utilization of it. There's no sense putting money in if it doesn't have a high utilization. And I, I see it also, kids' rodeos. It's being used for a lot of youth stuff. So it's, it's been there forever. I mean, I'm, I'm a huge supporter of this. I've been trying to get this thing going and I really want it.
Could concerts be held out there? Taylor Swift?
I could definitely recruit Taylor Swift.
That would be good, but the question is seriously.
Sure.
We have music concerts out there.
Sure. Mayor members of council, we've, we've had people inquire about car shows, doing different things like that. We've had one request, which was another COVID casualty that wanted to do a concert. And they were actually in the preliminary stages to do a, a red dirt country concert out there. So there are possibilities. Once again, it comes down to, you mean, I've got to rent Portageons?
Yeah.
To do my event. And that's kind of been a source of contention with
We do have a limit on how late they can run out there.
That is correct.
So that, yeah, so there, there are rules out there to minimize community impacts.
Microphone.
Comment was, we're looking at as an enterprise fund kind of setup, we're gonna as an enterprise fund kind of setup, we're gonna be able to recoup the money by renting the thing out.
There isn't a specific enterprise fund for this. There it would be general fund supported. Then hopefully the revenues that are earned over a significant amount of time go back into that.
Okay, this would be our version of a baseball field. In Phoenix has baseball and soccer and pools and things like that. We need to spend some money on amenities. This town. We just don't have, I mean, we have a private library and a private museum and we don't do things that other towns do, and we need to do some things. I think it's it's consistent with our brand. It's consistent. Rural lifestyle and it's we, it's been there forever. It's the only thing that's been holding it back has been restrooms and the fact that we're improving someone else's property. I don't think it'll ever turn a profit. But we ought to really cut into the expenses by keeping it utilized as often as we can.
Mayor, if I may, you know, we just the this rough stock stuff that Luke is talking about. That was a donation from the Cape Creek Rodeo Days five oh one C three in tune of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of stuff that we put into it. That this, we're this, this for this rodeo this year. Additionally, in my first term as mayor, we had Patty sitting back, back over there, put together a fifty fifty grant application for restrooms at the rodeo and and because of personality issues on my first council, they voted down applying for a fifty fifty grant. We would have had it done and it would have cost us a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So, you know, we're, we're way beyond, that was six years ago. So we're, we're way beyond the time that we need to finish improving that, get it in our, get it in our, our ownership and move forward.
So that grant money is no longer available.
Oh, no, it was the net, the debt, and the next day was the deadline and the council voted no, four to three.
I just think it's, it'd be a good idea if we can try to recoup as much cost as possible by by maybe put hanging out on the website or something saying, hey, this is now available and here's how you do it.
Okay, and the the last section on the page is trails. As I mentioned earlier, Surrey Drive pedestrian crossing that is supposed to be a grant that would fall on the next page as grants other. So that comes out of, that won't be in the general fund. The Gateway Trailhead is budgeted for a hundred thousand. But that is tied to a grant as well. I'm not sure which one. Where is it here?
It's the Arizona Park.
Arizona Park. On page thirty five, oh, the the top one. So if we don't get the grant, we're not doing the project. Okay.
So I was going to ask that question, Carrie.
If you don't get the grant, you're not doing the product. And then the last piece on that page is Public Works Streets. So this is the general fund portion of the expenses. On the next page at the bottom, there's her fund. And so it shows a dollar amount in each of the five years. So for fiscal year twenty four, it's three hundred and eighty thousand. We actually got the estimates for next year's her funding from the league and it's up slightly to three hundred and eighty nine thousand.
Will this get us catch up with the deferred maintenance over the period of this?
Over a five year period when it really ends in three years.
So there's an analogy here to the maintenance of the water and utility systems where we did not maintain them. And then all of a sudden, things start breaking and we had to spend more because we deferred things. The street's the same way. If you don't keep them up, you're going to spend more down the road. Because instead of just a simple repair, now you've got a major repair. So this is in my view, this is money well spent to get us back and and we
Well, but it doesn't get you to to cover. If you want to cover this current pavement management program, you would need to take roughly well, and by the time you get to fiscal year twenty eight, see another million and a half to two million dollars and split that out over fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, twenty six to catch up on the current pavement management program. Because we should be updating that program by fiscal year twenty six and then start implementing that next five year plan in twenty seven and twenty eight. And it's not budgeted that way. So we would have to essentially move those two years into fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, twenty six to catch up. So that would be another million and a half to two million dollars.
I thought of the opposite. We said that we needed to add three hundred thousand next or this year and then another seven or get it up to seven hundred thousand year after.
And yeah, but altogether, it's close to two million.
I ran the numbers. Excuse me. I went ahead and ran the numbers on what it would be if we compacted it. What we've been doing is basically, we, when we originally set up the pavement management plan, we set it up at a million dollars a year in expenditure. What we didn't realize is when they did the pavement management plan, they said, oh, this is how much it costs for a square yard of mill and paper, a square yard. They didn't include things like the traffic control or the striping or the removal of some of the things we and we dug into that as we were putting these projects out and all of a sudden they were coming in, we we had added money, but then we were getting bids back that were you know, even a little bit more than what we had estimated when we doubted seventy five percent or doubled the amount of the money in the projects. So back through and did a deep dive analysis. And so the numbers that we have in the budget are, we feel pretty good right now. The problem is that we've been, since we didn't have the million dollars and we didn't have the, you know, to spend the last two years, we've been pushing that, we've been pushing those projects out. It's not uncommon in Public Works to take a five year master plan, make it an eight year plan. And that's what we've been doing because we didn't have the money. The projects were still there. But we were going to still identify where we were after five years and and move the new pavement management plan to either two thousand six or two thousand seven. When I ran the numbers by taking the projects that had been identified in the pavement management plan and spreading them out over first of all, I made it so that it was going out to two thousand eight. Okay, that's what is, that's what I gave Mitzi to put into the capital improvement plan. When we take it and try and bring it back to two thousand six, we're going from spending one point one to one point four million a year to spending between two and two point two million a year for the next three years. So those are the numbers that we have right now that we would be spending if we try and come, if we try and compartmentalize, we're trying you know, catch up and then be on tap with the plan. I don't know, you know, I don't, this is not easy for me to say, but that's where we are today. We are sitting there at a needing to catch up somewhere between two and two point two million a year. And we originally budgeted it at one, but the one was the one million that they gave us was flawed. And so we couldn't, we couldn't build it. We couldn't build the project for the one million that they did because they simply it's three dollars, three dollars a square yard for for doing like the seal code on Carefree Highway. Well, great. We did get that price. It came in at three dollars a square yard. But we also had fifty thousand dollars in traffic control, fifty thousand dollars in in mobilization. Striping was another thirty thousand dollars. So you approved a two hundred and seventy ninety thousand dollar project, but that's not this capital, that was not was in this pavement bench for the work. So I apologize for that, that we didn't catch that sooner. We had escalated it up. So we came in on budget because we'd escalated it thinking we were covering for inflation. We didn't realize we were covering for a misunderstanding of how they were putting the material in.
So you need two point two million dollars a year instead of the million dollars a year, right?
Correct.
Okay.
A million dollars a year will get us through if we kick it to, if we kick it through two thousand eight, the million dollars to a million two will 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 make that. But it again, the failure rate, as Mayor Morris was talking about, is something that we are really worried about. And that's just to get our, that's to basically hold steady with our pavement condition index. That doesn't get us to, you know, it it improves it, but it's not by a lot.
The bottom line is you need, you need two point two million a year.
That will get us, that will get us to a, that will get us to an improvement in our pavement can, overall pavement condition index for the town. That's the rating that they use on pavement. So it's not spoiled, it's not, it's not cracking that you're, you're addressing things as as they go.
So in terms of cost, you know, so we're bringing in now just under four hundred thousand in her funds. So the remainder would have to be covered by the general fund. And so if you're talking to two point two, you know, going to be, you know, one point six, one point eight.
So we, the missing piece in all this is how much money we have, we will have coming in.
Correct.
And then how much money is in our bank account that we could potentially invest in something if it had a good return for us? We typically use twenty million dollars we have in the bank. We never, never spend all the general fund. We always have money left over. So I'm presuming we're going to have twenty plus million dollars for these delayed projects. And so, I mean, we ought to be thinking, if, I'm not sure it's it's payment, I don't know where it is, but we ought to be thinking, is there something we should be doing somewhere? Pedestrians, we haven't got pedestrian safety yet. And that's, that's the number one on my hit parade. We should be thinking, okay, if if we do have funds and we have, the general fund generally covers inflation because food inflates. And a number of people inflates so that we're pretty well covered on our general fund inflation factor, I would say. So we ought to be thinking at the same time is if we have funds, where's the best place to employ them?
Agreed. And there are other, there are projects that we, there are projects that we want to do, but at the same time, the pavement management is the majority of what we're spending from the public works and that we're budgeting for, to try and keep our roads in a drivable, well maintained condition.
The first item under Public Works Streets, that category does have pedestrian safety study recommendations at a hundred thousand out in fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven. So that's included in there.
I just don't think that reflects the kind of, that doesn't reflect, I mean, we're spending on the number three priority, we're spending a hundred fifty nine thousand. And the number one priority isn't started until twenty five. That doesn't make sense to me.
I will apologize for that because I didn't get, I did not recognize the coding that they were using. So I was told to rank my projects. So this is project number one. This is project number two. This is project number three.
Everyone else understood it. So Sean, Sean did a great job.
So my, my, my rankings were ranking the projects that if we only can do five projects, here are the five projects. Here, if we can do six projects, here are the six projects. So I did not follow the same because you'll see I have a priority number nine.
To his own tune.
I do.
I I would just urge town staff to look at the east side and you've heard from other council members too. I don't want to steal their thunder, Bill. I I think there is a, an opinion that we need to have safe walkways between, for example, the roadhouse and in the hideaway.
Yes, and my, my crews were out there, my crews were out there this week repairing the walkway between those, getting ready for the parade and bike week. They were out there last week trying to regravel and and repair those walkways.
So I I would really urge staff, take a hard look, not pedestrians, the pedestrian safety did not cover those walkways. Is my, is my And so that's still an open issue with me is what are we going to do about those walkways pronto?
Luke, could you respond on what's in this fiscal year budget to be completed?
Before Luke gets to to the podium, could I ask a quick question? Why is the Surrey Drive pedestrian crossing separate than the other pedestrian work?
Because it it is, it was always intended to be funded by a grant if there were no grant funds because it's very expensive. And we intended to get some assistance from other property owners to pay for it. And the, if you rank where the pedestrians are, there aren't as many pedestrians on this end as there are on the other end. So the, that's why we focused on those crosswalks.
But what kind of a grant would be available? MAG?
MAG, yeah, we've applied for MAG. It just hasn't been funded yet. And we will, we have that in our we have May grants that we're applying for every year.
The the crossing was also addressed in the, in the study that was
But it wasn't rank.
No, there were a couple of factors that if, if everything falls a certain way, then it would be required, like the the Hidden Canyon subdivision, for example, that would increase the demand and the need for something for safer crossing. Because if you know where Surrey Hill, the Surrey Drive is coming into Cave Creek, coming into the town core, it's, it's right there. So there was a need to look at Nighthawk or some kind of flashing beacon coming in. So once again, we were looking for a grant.
Sixty miles an hour.
Correct. Yeah, it's just, and it's a major trail connection to the east and and west parts of town. So that's why I was identified as something that if we could go and get a grant for it, it would be ideal because of the cost associated with it. But the benefit and the return is immense in safety. Then as far as trails within the town core go, we, we do have some minor ones that will be completed that have been budgeted for this year. Not very many left. What we're looking to do is there are several owners of businesses and properties along there that will be installing those as they come online. There is a potential public parking area that would have a trail implemented there. We're working with several property owners on, on the north side of Cave Creek Road in the the general area that we're talking about between Circle K and the currently being renovated former town dump. There are some opportunities there to get additional easements and put in, put in pathways that'll make that a lot safer. And that's really, that's really the end of town that's left to build out that we're, we're planning for and and really budgeting for. But not reflective in the CIP.
Headed question. Last fall, we were promised a copy of a new trails map for the town. Is that available yet?
The last, most recent draft was actually delivered to me today. So hopefully very soon.
Could we get, could the council get a copy of it when it's available for release from you?
Absolutely.
Could we also get a large, the the large zoning map that you showed me?
Anytime. Yes.
And then I'd like to lobby for something here. The most important trail, I think, in town is the Town Downtown Trail. And for twenty, twenty five, thirty years, we've had so many different iterations that we used to call it streetscaping and we had the concrete installations and a lot of different things. If the mayor's drawing attention to it and it's a priority for literally public safety, why would we spend this kind of money, four hundred some odd thousand at the Gateway Trailhead, which really dead ends up to the Cave Creek Regional Park? Why would that not be a lower price wishlist and take that money and expedite? Not that this is a trail per se in your area, but why would we not look at the flexibility of using those funds to expedite the completion of the commercial trail to the downtown area?
Well, just quite easily a response to that is because we don't have the right of way or the easement with to do that.
Where we do on one side of the street, why would we not finish or whatever you want to call it? And then I want to lobby a little bit further. I wish there was something in the budget, and maybe there can be in this process, to restore our medians. And I don't mean reconstruct the medians. I'm talking about an assessment by the staff of the current plants that are in the medians. Some are pretty bedraggled, starting with coming in from Carefree and all the way through town. Because I really believe we can get corporate donors and other co participants if the town has a funding shortage. But it's an opportunity to dress up the medians with native species, hopefully no more California barrels or other things. But it it just should be a priority. It doesn't have to be done all at once, but maybe a phased program to look to see if there's any interest in corporate donations of materials or money and so forth. And then secondly, And then secondly, and, uh, I had no staff, he used to hear this type of thing, but if we could take a look at any of the medians that were removed in the bicycle lane installation and the asphalt improvement, if there's any specific areas where the medians, I think maybe this is more for hell, but where the medians could be restored on a case by case or a specific location basis. I'll bet you there's a couple of places out there where we could restore pieces of median for the purpose of creating vegetation and shade and so forth. And then finally, as long as they got floor here temporarily, Mr. Turman. At some point, whatever you do with the town trails and so forth, could we study a proposal from staff to create desert shade long-term ongoing project for the downtown commercial corridor? And it'd be nice, we got into a discussion of Ramadas and shade structures and things like that, but if we could restore the low level vegetation in the medians, did we ever get to a tree, like Central Avenue with a bridle path? Can we get into a feasible recommended, uh, investment, long-term of a phase project for trees for the purpose of pedestrian shading and, and so forth? And then Carrie, I'm going to probably come and bawl you someday, if we can ever get APS's attention to see if we can bury a portion of the overhead electric lines, which we tried so many years ago and didn't succeed. But I won't lobby you this evening on the gaslight concept of a demonstration project, but we do have gas lines in the commercial corridor formerly from Black Mountain Gas. And I really believe that it could be done, uh, with a municipal gas rate and if it could be done with, uh, residents or visitors wanting to sponsor a light fixture. It would be fun just to try a demonstration project, so you've got better pedestrian illumination. You're not aggravating Bruce Arlen and the dark sky issue, but we take down the old sodium vapors and we put something in that uh, hopefully would be southwestern in application and design. And that's our living room, I just think we can do better besides slowing down the Speedway and the Mad Max driving. I just think we can make better host of ourselves with, once you guys are addressing parking and crosswalks and things like that. But, uh, let's see, we can find some other monies to expedite the town trail, the town commercial town trail if possible. That's, and that's just, I'm not asking for you to respond, but I'm trying to give you a tickler list to see if anybody on staff has an idea for vegetative restoration of existing medians, a potential place or two where maybe the medians might be reestablished. Maybe some peripheral, if we have sufficient easements on the side, mature trees for landscaping and shade, that type of thing, so. Thanks, Mr. Tur for your extra time.
Well, as Luke said, I mean, our, our major issue has been lack of right of way or, um, gaining an easement from a property owner. And so there are some critical parcels that, you know, if, if push comes to shove, it is. Push comes to shove, you can, you have alternatives, but we don't want to do that. That's never been the town's goal, to use that option. It's much better to work with the property owners.
I think the federal government has, has, uh, grant money available for conservation and preservation, we ought to take a look at. You know, kind of, kind of what the councilman argued.
It hasn't been a funding issue, really.
No, it's.
It's not a funding issue.
A lack of room from one side of the street to the other and right away.
And getting the right away.
Which is why some medians have been reduced and other medians have disappeared. And the, so it's based on the town's property, not physically or monetarily what we can do on a year to year basis.
I understand, what I'm saying though is if you, if you get something, get like an artist rendering of what it might look like, those business owners might be a little bit more amenable to, you know, giving you the the easements and things.
Mayor Jackie Davis was mayor at the time that the streetscape was done, it's got some beautiful illustrations in, who knows what's feasible.
I mean, I just think, like I said, the federal government, you know, doing preservation and conservation, I mean, they're throwing money at you left and right. I, I think it's just kind of a smart thing to do, we put a little seed money in, get some artist renderings and things like that, and show people what it could look like. Uh, you probably get the business owners, for the most part, to say, yeah, that's kind of cool.
I would certainly be willing to go out and help talk to them. I mean, we had, we had a great meeting and that, that's a good way to get, uh, businesses organized because they're, if, if the, if the town is more attractive to the people to come, because many areas are walking areas in town, and, uh, it, it's going to help them too, it's going to help their business, so.
Mayor, members of council, what, what we've been able to do in the town core with our pathways just in the last five years alone, has been due in large part to the streetscape pilot, uh, effort we did in front of Big Earl's and, and in that area. And a lot of property owners saying, oh wow, that's what the town is talking about. Have an easement, put it in, do those things, it's just been, really, I can think of three properties that have been a little, and it's not for lack of effort or.
Understand, but like I said, sometimes you got to sell them by showing them a picture. Um, some people are, you know, like to see the written word, other people like to see, you know, fancy little pictures. And if you can show somebody saying, hey, if we do this, it's going to drive more business to you, I doubt seriously if they're going to say no. After all, businessmen are in the, in the, you know, in the business of making money. And things that drive business are things that they're interested in. Because I'm seeing some nods back in the back there. In our brand.
Thanks, Luke.
Okay, page thirty-five, uh, is essentially, we've, we've covered the grants and HERF, and then there's a whiff of bonding for the thirteen, uh, million one ninety, and then that takes us to page thirty-six, which, um, is wastewater, uh, Cape Creek water and Desert Hills water funds. So if you have any questions on the projects, the ranking, Sean is here to help out.
Um, I just had a quick question because I'm not familiar. Can you tell us the eight inch water line going to Continental Mountain Estates? Can you give any information on that?
Mayor Council says that, 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 um, project is defined by development agreement that we have in place with Continental Mountain Estates. Uh, the, uh, developer, uh, has constructed a, or has a property, I think it totals fourteen lots, residential lots. Uh, per the town's subdivision code, they are required to bring fire protection or have fire protection. The town's distribution system, uh, leading up to that property only is a six inch line, so they can't get more than a thousand gallons a minute of fire flow, which then has a restriction on the size of the, um, uh, the, um, uh, buildings. So the agreement that was entered into, it's a development agreement with that developer, is that they would actually build the booster pump station that's necessary to move the water up to the site. And the town would pay for and construct the improvement, so there's a section of six inch water line. Uh, we're looking actually to keep the six inch in service and actually parallel, uh, to a slightly different route, uh, with a new eight inch line. And we take water from our Rockaway reservoir and the new booster pump station, and developers are required to construct and convey that up to the property. So, um, that was, uh, we put that in, uh, four years ago when I first started with the town, uh, because that development agreement was in place. So. Is that, uh, you need more details?
Again, I, and, uh, anything else? Um, if we're talking about Cape Creek Water, the water treatment plant, uh, treatment upgrade was carried forward from this current fiscal year into fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five for the smaller, uh, projects, and then again, in fiscal year twenty-eight, we need to add, I don't know, six and a half, seven million dollars for the large project, uh, for the, uh, treatment plant upgrade.
If, if I, if you want to give a little bit of context to that, um, in that, uh, two and a half years ago, when the town purchased the Paul membrane units for the treatment plant, that was done to, um, address a treatment technique at the water treatment plant. The, the, the vessels that were there, the treatment vessels could not remove organic carbon to the level required when the town, the state, uh, reclassified the plant in two thousand and fourteen. Then we actually had to list, uh, um, issue letters because we weren't meeting the treatment technique. So the town elected to purchase two, uh, Paul, uh, trailer, uh, membrane units, treatment units. Each of them can, uh, produce up to a million gallons of water a day, the plant's actually rated at three, so it wasn't supposed to replace the entire plant at the time. It was just to give us a blend to the point that we'd be back in compliance, uh, which has been what we, has occurred. When the state, uh, and the county, it's actually Maricopa County Environmental Services Department, uh, MCESD, uh, gave us the operational permit, they gave us four years, um, to operate what they consider a hybrid plant and to run the Pauls in, uh, membrane units in conjunction with the existing West Tech conventional treatment units that we have out there. So, um, by next fall, we have to make a decision. Um, the way they wrote it is that the Paul, uh, membranes were the pilot. Um, so we have to go back in and say, no, we prefer to keep the Pauls because they produce the best quality, uh, water for the town and look to decommission the rest of the site. Uh, that does, the, the plant is currently rated at three million gallons a day of treatment capacity. That's pretty much the, uh, maximum, we can send up the sixteen inch pipeline without changing the booster pump stations downstream. Uh, but, uh, with the rising costs on the, uh, City of Phoenix Interconnect, staff thinks it's prudent to push that project, the actual physical project cost out in the capital program. Uh, the thought being, the, the scope would be to add new, uh, Paul, um, membrane units inside the building. So not to replace the trailer units, which the town has purchased, but to actually supplement them and, uh, convert the plant totally to a, a membrane treatment facility. So the money is next year in the capital program, which will start, uh, you know, July first, would be, uh, to have bring a consultant on to help us go through the permitting process with Maricopa County, and then we expect there'd be some plant upgrades, uh, necessary or modifications made more so. Um, if we think what's going to happen is the county's going to say, uh, you have to make a decision on which treatment process you keep. If it's the town's interest, which I believe it is, to, to keep the membrane units, then we may as well start getting rid of those tried in West Tech units because they're not going to be, uh, we won't be able to use them anymore. So that's how we built the capital program is to, uh, spend, uh, this, this first fiscal year, um, with permitting process. And second fiscal year is be when the operational permit was due up and then with modified permit, modify the plan to get it ready for the next expansion. We have already engaged a firm who's done a similar expansion, Black and Beach did a high level estimate for us a few years ago. We'd actually like to get, uh, another consultant on board to, to look at it in a little more detail. One of the biggest unknowns is the electrical upgrades that may be required. Um, so, uh, we almost look like, uh, in that fiscal year twenty-five funding, that would give us enough funds to actually have someone come in and do that design and have that ready and gives us a better estimate of what the future cost will be.
So. Can I ask a question? Sean, um, is there any money allocated for water banking?
Uh, that's actually in the operational budget. So, uh, all of our CAP water costs and, uh, um, we have a line item in both, uh, Cave Creek Water and Desert Hills Water for the CAP cost. And that includes, um, the capital, uh, cost, the delivery cost and, uh, banking cost, that's all put in the operational budget.
Okay, thank you, and secondly, um, I see, uh, Cape Creek Water Meter replacement for seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, I recall that you had applied for a grant at one point in time, and I think we did not get it, but are there any other grant opportunities?
Uh, yeah, we applied for a Watersmark grant, and my understanding is they still haven't told us, it was posted, actually released last November, so they're very behind schedule. Uh, so, uh, we're built this year's capital program, assuming that we don't get that, uh, Watersmark grant. And, uh, so in total, the project has, uh, we've added some more cost to the project with the goal of trying to get the existing, uh, meters replaced in the system and allow the town to start moving forward to what they call an AMI system, an automatic meter infrastructure. But that means for, uh, the residents, customers and the, the staff itself, as that gets us into where we're almost seeing not live, but we're getting, uh, you know, a couple of times a day, we're actually getting billing information, uh, or usage information, it's not billing, billing, we'd still do it on a monthly basis, but we'd actually, it's, becomes an automated system at that point. So where we can do things like address, um, leaks, et cetera, much more quickly than with the current system. Um, but yeah, so we've, we, there are, uh, other potential grants out there, so we're looking at other opportunities to help fund this to allow us to do it more quickly, more efficiently. It'd be nice to get enough funds that we can bring a contractor in, just purchase all the meters and go to town. Once the, um, Carefree disconnects are all done in the next, uh, few months, we'll have about, um, twenty-three hundred meters existing accounts in the Cave Creek system, right now about three hundred of them have been changed over to the Neptune meter, so we still have about two thousand meters to go, so there's still a long, long haul to go on the project.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Any other questions on wastewater or desert hills?
Uh, just one quick one, uh, Sean, there is no emergency generator shown here at the, uh, Carol, is it Carol Heights, Rockaway, off Rockaway? So we're going to leave that without a, uh, emergency generator?
Uh, yeah, so, um, uh, mayor council, um, so currently the town's water treatment plant has emergency generator, the nearie facility has emergency generator. Um, a few years ago during the fire event, we lost power, uh, up at the, at the, uh, Rockaway. Um, so the Carol Heights Booster Station, Carol Heights feeds, um, Pressure Zone Seven, which is also the pressures on the nearie feeds and Pressure Zone Eight. Yeah, the site is set up for a generator, it wasn't the, the capital program, uh, we've elected to push it out just to try and balance some funding. I would like to do, look at an overall program of, of, is that necessary, it comes into part of the discussion of, uh, do we want to have an emergency generator at the new city of Phoenix Interconnect site, and can we afford one? The, the Carol Heights generator was at least three hundred thousand dollars, and that was about eighteen months ago, we had got a quote for a used generator at the time. So if we were to have to buy a new one right now, first thing, it's about twelve to eighteen month lead time. And then we have to decide on how big that site is, so once the master plan's done, we can have a better idea. I elected to take it out of the capital program, but, uh, once we're finished with the master plan this year, I expect we'll have some new projects to, to put back in, and that could be something that we look at as the, um, electrical hardening of all the sites, uh, which is more typical, you would have emergency generators, uh, but to power that, uh, site in total is a fairly large generator. It's, uh, it would be the second largest in the town's inventory right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so to summarize, we'll make the changes that we mentioned. Um, we will take the first year and start to fit that into the fiscal year budget. And then we can look at things, um, like the, uh, pavement management program and, and see where we're at with our, our revenues, um, our revenues are actually, um, on target. You said there, you're looking at what we budgeted and we are above that and, and going. We're being conservative with our, our revenue projections. And it, and I'm talking mostly the general funds now, because we have the, the utility funds, um, set with the utility rate, uh, projections. So in terms of the general fund, we'll be a little bit conservative with the, um, next year's budget projections for sales tax and also hope for the best with the legislature. But we, the legislature.
I was just going to ask, yeah. What's the status of that bill about elimination of the?
No, they haven't made a decision, they haven't acted on that yet. So that's like a million and a half dollars of revenue that.
Governor said she was going to veto it.
She's, she publicly said that?
She said that to a meeting of the Democrat, uh, Democratic Party.
Okay, well, I did, I did send her through her site, um, the information that this council had adopted a resolution and, and, you know, if you'd like a copy, because she couldn't attack. I did send it in, that, that town council was voted unanimous unanimously against that. So anyway, we'll put, we'll plug this in, uh, year one, anyway, fiscal year twenty-four for the next fiscal year budget. And then when we come forward, we'll look at things like the pavement management program and how we could potentially catch up that, that current five-year program with the use of fund balance, and, and that's what we would have to do, and we, we can have a conversation about that.
Okay, I, I, I just want to put a little bit on, on, on the revenue and the town's financial health standpoint. As I mentioned earlier, we got over twenty million bucks in the bank. The, the general fund, we, it's going to be probably near fourteen million dollars revenue. Um, we've got about fifteen million dollars that's going to come out of the, um, of, of the water company. So we're going to have about a thirty million dollars total revenue coming into the town between the utilities and the, uh, and, and the general fund, at the same time, our, our debt is dropping dramatically every year, it's going down four million dollars a year uh, from a, what was a. from a, what was a sixty-three million and is now down to twenty. So the town is in solid, solid financial position. Our general fund has been increasing at eleven percent a year. So we are not poor, but we need to be frugal because we have a lot of challenges.
We do. And we will.
Anything else for this meeting?
There is public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Thank you.
Hello, David Phelps again. First off, I misspoke on my last public comments correction from one hundred gallons to a minute from getting from City of Phoenix to about a thousand gallons a minute. Small, small error on my part. I would like to lobby again on the idea of not utilizing the piece of land that we use for the, what we call the water ranch, the sewer site, and will be the food bank site as not putting so much money into that site for the gateway project. I'd propose at this point in time to move the gateway project to the rodeo site because you could trailer to that site. It's already got the space, got the pavement. We're putting three quarters of a million dollars in there. There will be public bathrooms. We have a part-time employee now. I can envision that we will have a staffer there to accommodate that. And it makes sense to me that we would combine the rodeo use grounds as a area of rescue in case of a fire, that we would try to go for grants. I'm following up on Dusty's thought here, that we would look for grants for our area of rescue, which also doubles as our rodeo site and this venue. I'm looking at the relationship between the parking lot of the rodeo to the Cave Creek Regional Park, which can get you to spur across without trespassing on private land going up the creek. It can also get you back over to the Phoenix and Orin if you care to ride that way from that particular area. So I think it would be a gain and we could get multiple uses out of the same dollar. Other than that, thank you for sharing and thank you for all the patience and asking all the questions. It's been a pleasure to sit here and listen to you guys talk. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Additional speakers.
That was our last comment. All entertaining motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Special thank you to staff that were there tonight.
Thanks, Tom.
And the council too.